Earlier grades and then maybe a little bit larger, further down as we approach grades four and five. It's not perfect. Craig and I were looking at projections for next year. You know, it's dicey in our elementary schools, having three neighborhood elementaries. When you get to that magic number around forty-four kids, forty-five kids, you know, in terms of do you do a twenty-two and a twenty-three or you're gonna do three fifteens? And those are, you know, instructional decisions, those are financial decisions, et cetera.
If I may.
Yeah?
Preschool numbers, this was October, we now have Decembers. December numbers have creeped up in preschool and you're wondering why. Well, as kids turn three years old, they exit the birth to three on their birthday and they are eligible for preschool here if they have special ed needs. So our December one numbers look like.
Can you give them to us?
I will, so let me get, I have that. That's how I was able to answer the sixth grade question earlier today.
And I think that's why we keep them low because we anticipate.
Because we know that they grow for birth to three. So right now, Great Neck is at sixteen fifteen and Oswagawatchee is at eighteen and fifteen.
Eighteen.
I will also say that in conversation with our special ed director today, there are four more in the queue that we expect by New Year.
Wow.
And then we expect by the end of the year, probably another, another three or four more. And those are the special ed kids and we're supposed to then have a fifty-fifty split with their non-disabled peers.
Right.
So you may see when we get to staffing, actually a need for one more section of preschool.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
In the future. So this might look artificially low, twelves might say, why are you having it? But there's a different game with preschool than kindergarten. Kindergarten, it's like you're in for the year.
And.
But it's not a twelve, it's a sixteen.
It's a sixteen fifty.
Now, but on October one, it was twelve. So between October one and December one, you had kids turning three, three that needed special ed needs that then are required to go into our preschool.
So do we ever consider doing it mid-year, putting in another class? Of course, with the teacher shortage and everything, that's another issue.
Teacher shortage and then again with preschool, they need a bathroom. Like we've had to outfit when there's multiple sections, so we haven't done that yet, but preschool. But when, when we're looking at this type of numbers and they're getting up to the eighteens and we're talking about three and four-year-olds, like we are saying, okay, that's probably the tipping point. That's how we went from two preschools to three, three preschools to four. And you may see a superintendent request in a month or two for an additional one.
Well, I know because I've been in those preschool classes and we're talking, they're still changing diapers and doing a lot of things there. That is a, when you've got eighteen kids in that class, it is. And they have special needs as well. So that is a real, that's a real high number. What is our cap for that? Do we have a suggestion as to our cap?
I mean, there is the ideal, ideally, we want, you know, preschools, say, fourteen's, fifteens.
Right.
So if it's, if it's fourteen, it's seven and seven or seven and eight, if it's fifty. So that would be ideal, the higher.
Say that again?
You lost me.
Okay, so with preschool, we want about a fifty percent special ed population and a fifty percent non-disabled peers. So we want a class size of about fourteen or fifteen is ideal. And why, but then I broke it down saying like seven special ed kids, seven non-disabled peers or, or eight and seven. Like those are good numbers ideally. As you, the more you creep up, just, I mean, it's a bigger class when you're talking about like really, really young kids.
Right, very, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Is how many for these rooms, so the number's not fifty-seven, it's really sixty-eight, for these four classrooms, how many paras are in each class? Yeah, I was just, you read my mind. So we need, this is not, say, typically a third grade room where you might find a third grade teacher in maybe a para. These are, these are labor-intensive rooms. I mean, Craig and I walked through the schools, there could be, there could be five, six, seven, eight adults in these rooms at any one time. Teacher, four or five paras, special ed teacher. You could see a speech and language pathologist or a social worker in there as well. These are rooms with five, four, five, six, seven, eight adults at any one time. This isn't a pre-K, one pre-K teacher with twenty kids. So roughly, on the regular, not in and out, how many paras are in these four? I'd probably put it around four. So it's four, four paras and a teacher.
And a teacher and maybe a occupational therapist or something else.
Right, so after, throughout the day, there could be six to eight, but there's four heavy in there all the time. Okay.
But even then, it's a burden.
Right, right. Do they pay for pre-K? We do not charge at this time. Many school districts do. When we started this program four years ago.
Yeah, when we separated, when we separated from the Friendship School.
It's a lottery.
The board at the time made a decision not to charge, which means that this board has that autonomy to have that discussion.
It also allows, let me just say, in my opinion.
For the non-disabled peers.
For the non-disabled peers, it's kind of a trying situation to go into a classroom that has that many special needs and for that, if your child is a not disabled, to be, to be.
Part of this next.
Part of this. So I think it's a little bit of an incentive and now it actually has become quite, quite, a lot of people want in. There's a waiting list because, because, because they don't have to pay.
And it's a lottery?
It is a lottery.
It is a lottery. Tell me this. For the non-disabled peers, it's a lottery. Special education students.
It's mandatory.
Are in. Tell me this, forget the cost for a second. Go with the thought process, this is too many, you'd be coming to us, say, you wanted more. Do you have the space to do more?
Well, see, so that's, that's what we're working on, Chris, because as we added the fourth section of preschool, you may recall, we had to at Great Neck add a bathroom to an existing classroom because that's one of the requirements for preschool. So as we envisioned and we built the schools with two kindergarten classrooms with bathrooms at each school. So we have two kindergarten classrooms with bathrooms, but then do we just take those for preschool and the kindergartners have to walk or do we, do we have the kindergartners use it? So we're looking at space allocations right now.
I don't know, sorry. I don't know that you've answered my question.
I'm sorry then.
If, I heard what you said, but I don't, I didn't hear the answer. I, okay. If you had to expand.
Yep.
Could you expand in either one of these two buildings?
We can't expand, but could we put a bathroom in a classroom and make it a preschool classroom? Yes. We're not gonna add a trailer to an elementary school and we're not going to add in addition to our schools, but it's really, what's, what's the best space? What's the easiest to accomplish?
So you could take a classroom, add a bathroom to it.
Yeah, correct.
Let me ask you, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Let me ask you this. What did we used to pay, or what did a kid or family used to pay at the Friendship School? And now I know I'm going down a rabbit's hole, but.
So that was also free.
We were getting charged and they could charge us anything they want.
So it was also free, but before the Friendship School existed, so now we're talking fifteen, sixteen years ago, we had a preschool program called PREP, Preparation for School, and it was at the high school and the non-disabled peers were charged a nominal amount to attend. And because it was fifteen, sixteen years ago, I don't recall what that nominal amount was.
How many schools?
Go ahead.
But I think the reason we went to do our own was because Friendship School just decided to increase their fees unbelievably and we got, we got a bill without any warning of over a million dollars. And that was why we decided it was much easier for us and I think personally, we do a much better job of it and we also have control of it. My question is, I got a lot of flapp from people saying in the Quaker Hill area, there are these preschools in Great Neck and Oswagawatchee, why not have one at Quaker Hill? And I know they have the autism class there.
So now you're actually reading what we're investigating.
Good.
If there we might put that fifth room at Quaker Hill. But again, you'll also know Quaker Hill has the half staircases.
Yeah.
We know by fire code, pre-K K and one have to be on the first floor. So we're looking at spaces right now that we can do it, that would be cost-effective to add a bathroom. We're not ready to share that yet.
Okay.
I can tell you the reason why they are at this end of town. A, we started with two classrooms four years ago.
Right.
Both were at Great Neck. Then we went to three classrooms. Now we are at four classrooms, obviously, you can see that on the chart. And it's really around, really consolidating resources, right?
Right.
I mean, we know these are labor-intensive, high-needs classrooms with speech and language pathologists, OT, PT, special ed teachers, social workers, school sites. These, these are high, you know, intense programs for, for some of these youngsters. You know, we're evaluating space. If we do go to a fifth classroom, you know, we have to look at can they be accommodated at one of these two locations or are we expanding up, you know, uptown to, to Quaker Hill? The other reason was we're also really around collaboration between pre-K teachers. These are intense programs and for instructional reasons, we have chosen at this time to, to keep them together. But if we do expand.
What do you mean keep them together?
Keep pre-K teachers together.
They can collaborate.
Rather than having, you know, two at Great Neck, one at Oswagawatchee and one at Quaker Hill because that would give us the four we have today. We think there is a strong instructional value in having pre-K teachers together to collaborate.
Yeah.
Correct. It remains to be seen, could we go two and three or are we expanding to Quaker Hill? We don't know that yet.
But with, with all of our teachers having the capacity and competence to Zoom, can we now use the technology to allow for that co-planning? I would say pre-pandemic, we were cautious about that. Well, I don't know if it's post-pandemic yet, but we were considering the one-off at a school and still having electronic means to collaborate.
That's, that's wonderful.
Would you, with the state, I don't know, can you allow a preschool, one preschool to be virtual because of the COVID vaccine not being for that age group and the concern of parents of that age group sending them to school, but still wanting them to be educated?
So right now, for the twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, the state of Connecticut is not allowing virtual classes. So that won't be allowed and then it's also difficult, not impossible because we did it last year, to do related service for preschool. But when you talk about physical therapy, occupational therapy, where it's a lot of like hand manipulation or body manipulation of a child, very difficult to do virtually.
And we did bring pre-K back earlier than the rest of the population last year.
Because of that, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not allowed to offer remote learning. One, go ahead, go ahead. No, you go. I don't see why, to Marcia's point, we're not expanding at either Quaker Hill, and if that was her point, or Great Neck or Oswagawatchee. Is that what we want to do?
We're considering.
Yeah.
Putting one section at Quaker Hill, keeping two and two, expanding preschool to five. This is not on today's agenda. This will be on a board of finance subcommittee agenda when we get about staffing. I'm just saying that as an example of how preschool numbers creep up. So we're looking at those possibilities, Chris. We're looking at what makes sense for re-converting a classroom into a preschool classroom.
But we, but we always do it school year, we never do it mid-year?
That is correct.
Okay. Good, because eighteen really bothers me.
It is, but you know, the kids also have bondage with their teacher and things like that, so.
Over twenty recent years.
You know, I'm just telling you why we're thinking about it is kind of anticipation so you're not shocked. Kind of set the stage for you and you're not shocked about the number twelve being too small because it does creep up.
Well, I got, and why aren't we charging? Can we charge?
That was a board decision when we left the Friendship School and the board at that time.
That would have been June of twenty sixteen.
We could change that.
Yeah, said no, but to your point, Chris, does, the Waterford Board of Ed have the autonomy to set a tuition rate for the non-disabled peers of preschool? Yes. And that money would go to the general fund.
Wouldn't go to the board's budget.
Yeah, but that's, that's something we could look.
Right, but I got that, but if we're charging, and I'm not proposing not be charged.
No.
But if we're charging, it makes more sense in my mind to expand and it sort of justifies in some way, shape or form, and I know it's not my decision, it's a board decision, that, hey, we're charging, but we're expanding because there's a need and we want more of you.
I, I look at it as, it's, it's part of the service of Waterford and unfortunately, we have become known for the place to get your special needs child educated and that's why our, our members are, we do, we do a very good job of it.
If we wanted to offer universal preschool, just to be clear, like because there's three years old in preschool and four years old, no, it's okay.
No, I was gonna look.
Oh, okay, but I was gonna say, like, because there's three years old and four years old in preschool, you have four sections, we're thinking of five. If you want to offer universal preschool, you're probably looking at what our kindergarten and first grade.
Yep.
Sections are. So we have to expand from the four to the six, twelve, eighteen to do universal preschool. We're not saying, that's not where we're recommending right now. We're just adding another section to really make sure that the special ed students who need it are on a location with their non-disabled peers. But your point is not lost, Chris, so I'm not trying to say that to negate your point. I'm just trying to further educate. It's still a board decision.
I, I worry that all of our numbers are, are going up. I mean, even in fifth grade, you've got the twenty-threes and the twenty-two and nineteenth and, and last year it was Quaker Hill that had the high numbers. The elementary, and then of course you have your first grades with fourteen, fifteen and fifteen, but.
I think one of the things that we want to show you next time, and we can talk about what you want to see next time, is historical class sizes over, say, the last decade.
That would be.
These numbers are low compared to the numbers of the last decade, so.
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful, yeah.
How many weeks are in a school year?
So.
Approximately forty-ish.
Okay.
I was gonna say thirty-six, we can talk about like vacations and everything.
Okay.
So, so are most of these other numbers pretty accurate?
They, they are. I mean, so.
I think it was just pre-K that, that happened.
Pre-K is the one that creeps up during the year. The other ones, I mean, will fluctuate as a kid leaves Waterford and a kid enters Waterford.
I think we're at nine ninety-five today, so that means there's.
We had some losses as well.
Exactly. What, Tom, what's the contractual number for K through five for a teacher? Twenty-seven?
No, I don't think that's high, is it?
It, each grade is different.
You can look it up in the W F C T contract.
I think it goes as twenty-six or so.
Binding number in the teacher contract. There's not. It says desirable class sizes.
Yeah.
There is no binding number.
But if it exceeds, then we have to do something.
Like add a para.
Add a para, split a class.
But you think the number's twenty-seven. We're, he's gonna look it up. One thing before we move on to middle.
It's high. It's a, it's a high number. I remember it being a high number and, and it was that way on purpose.
In a contract, you don't mind that. In a practice, you want it low.
Right.
Because a contract, to violate a contract is then revolting.
Exactly. No, I remember in negotiations, we talked about that.
Yeah, I thought it was different for each grade level, right?
And it is, it is, yeah.
I'm trying to pull it up as quick as I can.
No rush.
I'm really trying.
Before we move on to middle school, one of the things I want to draw your attention to is looking at the enrollment by grade level, right? So we have one eighty-one, one sixty-four, fifty-six, thirty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-one.
Where are you?
At the bottom of the numbers.
Oh, okay.
As we get to middle school and high school, that number's closer to two hundred. This district is going to see declining enrollment. We've already seen it at the middle school. We've eliminated six teachers at the middle school over the last five years. As these grades move up, unless there's an influx of housing developments in Waterford or, or, you know, demographics and births and whatnot change, we're going to see these classes move up to the middle school.
Sure.
And obviously the high school, so.
Yeah.
Why do those numbers decline when they get to the middle school?
No, they don't.
No, I'm saying. Oh, I thought you said they, the numbers decline. No, no, as these grades move up.
So you're saying less at a grade level, so as the grade levels move up to the middle school, because I will say historically, Waterford used to have between two or two-twenty, a cohort grade level. Now you will see grade levels.
Hold on, hold on, go back, go back.
Now you see grade levels not at two.
Can you work that?
Yeah, now, so what we're saying is, if the norm used to be two or two-twenty, none of these are two or two-twenty.
We're going down.
And what you notice is, like, right now, like, the high school's big class is one ninety and I think the middle school has an eighth grade, which is a little high, about one ninety, and then it drops to like one seventies and then you get this. So what we're saying is over time, like, like families don't leave Waterford, so we just kind of roll up the next grade. So you're gonna predict in three years, what, what third, fourth and fifth is, that's gonna be your middle school, right? In three years.
And none of it's ever gonna be two hundred, unless we.
What, you, you said what you're saying to say, these numbers are gonna stay the same in middle school. Is that what you're saying? What did you want to bring to our attention? That as, so see these numbers, I'm gonna call it one fifty, one sixty, fifth grade's in the nine, we have one eighty. These are about one fifty quality. As we get to the middle school, these numbers are one eighty-seven, one eighty-three, one ninety-eight, right?
Yeah.
As, just call it one fifties, we're at five sixty-eight. If this remains the same and nothing else changes, there's no new housing developments, there's no new factories in town or big employers, this five sixty-eight becomes about four fifty. If you're saying one fifty, one fifty, one fifty.
Right.
This becomes four fifty in a couple of years, four or five years instead of five sixty-eight. Now, when I got here seven years ago, this number was about seven hundred-ish.
And I will say, at the peak of the high school, middle school, it was about as high as eight twenty.
So what you're telling us this second is, those numbers, scroll back up please.
Yep.
Those numbers there, they're gonna travel to the next level, but the number's going to be lower than it is now.
So you will recall.
That's what they're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and you will recall last year at this time, we cut four middle school teachers because of that reduction.
So, but let me ask you this, and I think Marcia has said this, good God, is, why, it doesn't matter about the past, let's talk about the future.
Yep.
If that's the case, couldn't we take half of that number from the middle school? Let's say the reduction was six. Couldn't we take, in theory, forget certifications and put three of them down here to make the classes smaller? So we've done that.
Okay.
So last June, this board added two more elementary teachers at at the eleventh hour because of class sizes. Elementary FTEs, full-time equivalents, teachers, this has been fairly stable over the last X number of years. The challenge with three neighborhood elementary schools is you get some class, I wish we had the like the total for that grade level, but this is forty-five and nineteen, this is, you know, forty-five and nineteen to sixty-four. If you add another teacher, because you see, geez, twenty-three, you're at fourteens and fifteens now in fifth grade.
Right.
And so we.
And you're saying, geez, we have nineteenth and eighteens at grade one.
Right.
The challenge with three neighborhood elementary schools is you are gonna get these dips and bops and.
Right.
Dips and drops. Would there be, and I'm not proposing this.
Yep.
If we just said, Grade Neck is only gonna service pre-K through one, and Asagachi's only gonna service grades two and three, and I'm not proposing this.
That would be as bad as when we went from junior high school to to middle school.
Five. And Quaker Hill is the fourth and fifth grade school. There's efficiency in numbers, but.
Yeah.
As long as we continue to run three neighborhood elementary schools.
Yeah.
You're gonna see this, I mean, if you say two twenties in third grade seems high, well, forty divided by three is you now have thirteens.
Tom, I think, I think you're on.
That's not sustainable.
I think you're you're on a good idea there, making each school a, you know, a specialty in their grade level. However, the salesmanship on that would be horrendous.
Well, I wish you luck.
No, no, other option.
I was gonna get to that, because the question was on the contract, so I just wanted, I don't know if you can see this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, nobody, just read it aloud.
So, pre-pre.
We can't see, just say.
Pre-K one is twenty-three, two-three is twenty-four.
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry, pre-K to one, twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two to three, twenty-four, four to five, twenty-five, six to eight, twenty-six, nine to twelve, twenty-seven.
So, what the other option, and and this is not for compensation analysis, it's long-term. The other option, though, is if you deva- make the, let's just say, grade one, by the time they get to three and four and fifth grade, because they're older, they don't need smaller classes, you put them in two classes, you have an extra classroom for a pre-K, so you can do a universal pre-K, but you have extra classes because you're dividing those by two instead of three.
I I will say, we try to keep pre-K K in one, numbers.
Three, right, three.
Lower than grades three, four and five, or two, three, four and five.
Right. So when they get up to four and five, you collapse those two, those first grade, you know, potentially into two classrooms, so whatever year that will be, and then you have extra classrooms to integrate universal pre-K, because you have.
Well, again, universal pre-K would be about eighteen rooms, we have four right now.
Oh, all right, maybe not universal.
Right.
But expand.
But expanding.
Preschool, and I don't mean to.
I know what you mean, yeah.
Combat you at all verbally, I just.
So, let me ask you another question.
Yeah, it's all right, I get it.
You don't have to answer this now. In these rooms that are K through five, how many paras are in each of these classes?
Only if they need special ed, only if it's required by the IEP.
There's no regular ed para helping the teacher out, if there was a special ed child in a room that has an IEP that says you have para support?
Aside from that, no paras?
No paras.
Correct. Other districts do other things, we only provide paras for IEP needs. And that goes for preschool as well, there's just the frequency of kids needing a para in their IEP is greater, which is why you have.
Well, I I learned from sitting here that although contractually, it's based on a a figure, none of these are close to those figures, not that I'm saying.
Right.
It's not high, not that I'm saying it's not something to look at, but looking at what he said contractually as preferred, no one's banging the door down, in my mind, that it's high based on that. True or not true?
True.
True.
And.
The only, yeah.
Not in elementary.
What's that?
Not in elementary.
Correct, and could we, is it a thought, could you bridge the gap if you didn't expand by putting paras in these rooms, not as a Band-Aid, but to help mitigate matters, or no?
That would be a board decision.
I personally think that if you, you should you should visit the classrooms and see, because I I do the gardening classes with these groups, and I have to tell you, when you've got twenty-three kids and a teacher and myself, and I sometimes have a helper with me, it it's it's very challenging to have twenty-three kids. And that's that's in a garden situation, and when you're doing a classroom, and let alone COVID, three feet between everybody and all that sort of stuff. The reason I wanted to bring up this whole ad hoc thing was because even though contractually twenty-five is our top for fourth and fifth graders, those, I would like to see it more equitable throughout the whole system, whereas instead of knocking on the door of the numbers in elementary school, and certainly now at the middle school, our high school is like a prep school. Because our high school doesn't even, I don't even think they've got a twenty-five, they they might have one twenty-five in all these, look at these numbers.
Is is the, is the goal here to make these classes smaller? And I'm just asking a question.
In my.
Well, on the, on the, so, what, on the very first page, we have the purpose and the function of this committee.
This is what was approved. Yes.
Unless changed by the full board, so.
This was what was approved by the board.
That's why we wanted to put it on there, so that's our scope of work.
To examine class size and current course offerings offered to pre-K twelve in the Waterford Public Schools. We don't have a purpose of decreasing or increasing, we're just kind of evaluating, correct?
Okay. Evaluating, and then the full board could make those recommendations, and get the budget.
Right. Right. So. So my my suggestion is, I'd like to see some data on, you know, what are the effects of bumping, you know, do we have, I'm sure there's research out there, somebody once told me that when you hit a certain number, it 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 doesn't matter anymore. Uh, I don't know what that number is, but do we have some research that we can look at to say, yes, when you've got fourteen, you're doing, you you get so much better results, especially in the in the elementary level. But when you hit eighteen to twenty-five, it doesn't matter, you know, what what are those numbers? I I guess that's what I'm I'm looking.
So, one thing that you're proposing, thinking, is making these numbers smaller.
Only if they truly have an educational.
And there's a return on the investment.
Right, right. And and then, if we've got all these wonderful numbers at the high school, are we getting a return on our investment? Are our kids going to Ivy League? Are they getting?
Can we get to the middle school level?
Wouldn't you want the same research?
Yeah, we we skipped right over the middle school.
Can we get?
Well, I'm just going through the packet.
No, I know.
No, no, I know, I, listen, this is very, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't you want the same research on all levels?
Yes, absolutely, I saw it.
Thank you, thank you.
Not just.
But, yeah, so, not on all grade levels, absolutely, because we're saying K through twelve.
Well, this.
Right.
This, to me, so far, has been very informative.
Yes, it is very important.
And to me, it talks about options. One, and I'm not proposing this in any order, but as I see it, more paras. Two, expanding the classes, I mean, reducing the classes and making more classes. Three, charging for preschool. Four, taking, which we haven't looked at yet, resources from others to put here to make smaller. That's my takeaway this time.
And and I would like to see the research, I don't think paras ever equate to, in my opinion.
Right, and I'm not, I'm just, right.
Equate to, I'd like to see some statistics behind that, that if you just throw a para in there, it suddenly makes it okay to have it up to capacity, you know, kind of thing. Okay, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead, we could be here all night.
No, it's all right, this is your meeting. Here is data on Clark Lane, let's take the top chart first. So we have three grade levels at the middle school, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Top of one enrollment, ninety-two, ninety-five at sixth grade, ninety-two, ninety-one at seventh grade, and a hundred and ninety-eight at eighth grade.
Are these names just names of their group?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they name their team. That's a pretty common middle school thing.
They they designed those a few years ago, that the kids kind of voted on it, and and these are all like, I guess, Connecticut types of.
Or.
Shoreline, shoreline, yeah, well.
Shorelines.
Yeah, well. Coral.
Shore shoreline stuff, because coral is not a bird and a sea star, but but, yeah.
And they're divided by the four teachers, Chris.
Yeah, so.
Chris, know that it's, there's four, there's four core teachers.
So, grade six, the her- the herons.
Herons, herons.
The herons, there's four teachers for these ninety-two kids.
Right, and same with ninety-five and ninety.
Correct.
So four, 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 four.
Right.
And then grade six, the second one, is four, four, four.
Everybody has four.
And to be clear, it's the four cores.
And that's what this bottom chart is.
English, math, science and social studies.
That's the second chart.
I have a question. How many classrooms were eliminated by special services going over there?
None, oh, you mean, actual space?
Yes.
Four, I believe.
Really, we lost four classrooms?
Well, we didn't, so.
We didn't lose a.
They they were just empty rooms, or maybe we put a tutor to fill a whole classroom, and all they need is like a little office, like.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because, again, I will say.
Well, my son was in the those classrooms when he was in sixth grade, so at what point, and he's in, so at what point were they not used as classrooms? That's my question, yeah.
So many of them, so this board has eliminated six core academic classroom teachers at the middle school in five years. That would open up six empty classrooms, right?
Right.
Haven't Jim just juggled, like, the space allocation?
So Craig might have had, as, I'm gonna use a a speech-language pathologist, so Craig might have had a little nice eight-foot by eight-foot office, which is typical of the speech load.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That person may now have a full twenty-five foot by twenty-foot classroom.
Ah, gotcha.
So, there's about, we did the math, there's, heading into this year, eight to ten-ish rooms that are not being used as true classrooms.
Wow, so. We could put the pre-K in there.
Because you think about, it's the same, it's the same school that's gone from almost nine hundred.
Yeah.
From about eight fifty to.
To five sixty.
Yeah.
So why was there an issue with classrooms, students overflowing in the classrooms, and there not enough space for the kids?
Only because we reduced the teachers, is that what you're saying?
I am aware of. You mean during COVID with spacing out?
The class sizes increased?
Like, I guess the class size increased, so kids were squished into rooms because class sizes increased and kids were squished into rooms, and so I'm trying to understand.
So, so, okay, yeah.
Sure.
Was it because classrooms were removed?
No.
Or is it because?
No, no.
It was a board decision on the option of of teachers, so we used to have a split seventh and eighth grade team.
No, I know, yeah.
They would teach two sections of seven, two sections of eight.
Okay.
Now, as you look at the numbers, when you, if you get kind of from one ninety or low, lower than one ninety, you can easily do two, two teams. So, we're gonna make a business decision, if this was two sections of seven, those are gonna be really small classrooms, but the eighth could have used it. But because of certification purposes for eighth grade, you have to hold a seven through twelve cert in each content area, like, what else would they teach for like two sections if we were just to kind of keep them? And we're not gonna, teachers aren't gonna stay just for a halftime job, and we're gonna say, well, half your pay is cut.
Right.
So, then you look at what we looked at before with elementary, and what we're saying with elementary is, there, we're gonna keep it under that one ninety range, in general, one ninety-five range, and and they'll fit. But that means that this year, the twenty twenty-one school year, the eighth grade team has slightly higher class sizes, and you will see that down here. That's a one-year.
Blip.
Blip.
Yep.
Because we deleted the split team.
Right.
We could have done it.
And it didn't impact the seventh grade as much as it impacted the eighth.
Correct, these numbers that are at the top.
This is how many students are in the team, and this is average class size.
That five sixty. Forget the bottom for a minute.
Okay.
The five sixty-eight, there's twenty-four staff members representing that five sixty-eight.
Correct, eleven percent.
Thank you.
So, and so the room, so it's a combination of, we had COVID, we had to, you know, three feet potentially, we had twenty-four kids in maybe a room that doesn't fit twenty-four kids?
Well, when you say squished, overflowing, the the car plane was built for easily class sizes of twenty-six, but it'll be tight, it's rows and and and, like, it would fit.
Yeah.
So, is there a capacity, there's a capacity. Are teachers used to it? Probably not, because they've been a little bit lower. I mean, the middle school has crept up from high teens to now mid twenties.
Right.
So there's a spatial affect, if I feel like I had this center and this center, and I need to put in a couple more desks, I'm gonna feel like it's less real estate, but it's not overflowing, what do you mean to just?
No, no, you're fine.
The kids are not splashing out into the hallways.
So this five sixty-eight on twenty-four, that's, the the average is twenty-three. Have you started to explain this bottom one, because I don't get the bottom.
Sure.
Yeah, I I can take this one, I gotta go. This is one eighty-seven, so this is grade six, this is one eighty-seven, uh, divided by, uh, eight teachers. Two in math, two in science, two in social studies, two in language arts.
Different from the twenty-four above?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, same, same.
It's waiting to look at the same estimation, Chris.
Okay. This is simply a hundred and eighty-seven, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but a hundred and eighty-seven.
Divided by four, that's what it breaks out to.
Divided by eight. Right.
You're just showing us what.
An average class size would be in each of the cores, and you will see that eighth grade is a little bit higher than sixth and seventh.
Because you're at a two, two hundred kids, two hundred divided by eight is twenty-five.
But you will. Also see that next year's eighth grade won't look the same, because they'll have one eighty-three.
So, Marcia.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
Is, is your thought process for the middle school to reduce the number? Do you feel the number's high?
I I don't, i- i- I think the eighth grade's a little high, but it was necessary, it was the only kind of option. I I thought eliminating that that team was a good idea, because otherwise, it was gonna hit the elementary school again. I, you know, if if we could, in a in a perfect world, I would love to see below twenty in every class, everywhere. That's my personal feelings. However, when you have to, you know, be fiscally responsible and everything, I thought, when I looked at the class sizes from last year, uh, middle school class sizes were all quite small, and they're teens. And by eliminating that, it brought everybody up to the twenties, which is more like what happened with the, um, elementary schools.
And then you combine COVID, and I just think it's a perfect storm, and it's not a healthy environment, but.
Right. I didn't plan on COVID.
All right, I get it, that's next.
So, so, so my question is, what, uh, the little asterisk with the nine sections, so do we actually have an extra math teacher there?
We do, the math interventionist teaches a section of seventh grade math.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And we only have that in the seventh grade?
Well, so, again, with math, we have some kids getting to an algebra standard by eighth grade, and some kids getting to a pre-algebra standard in eighth grade.
Oh, okay. Right.
And so, we we do have, like, an interventionist teaching, like, uh, is it an algebra or pre-algebra section?
It must be pre-uh, is my guess.
Yeah, like, just as one of the duty periods.
And and this is the size of most of the home rooms, and that interventionist would have a home room?
I don't know about home rooms.
Okay, I mean, I mean, a core, you know, where kids report.
No, I know what a home room is, but to to Tom's point, I'm not sure if the interventionist has a home room,
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Or if they just start servicing, like, their intervention kids right away.
I have a question.
Because, hang on, because then, if, I I would like to see it split between the home rooms, otherwise, that number is not valid. You know what I'm saying?
Well, home room is about a five-minute deal in the morning.
But it also is a core person, right?
Well, a a core teacher conducts home room, but it's not for a long period of time, we, while.
But but it reflects their their core class size.
N- this reflects their core class size.
This is.
And does it accurately?
This actually, actually reflects their core class size, so that's why they chose that.
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is.
Okay, okay.
This is divided by nine instead of eight, that's what the asterisk means, so this is.
Right, right, so I'm I'm saying, is that nine an accurate thing?
For for the four cores.
For math, for math it is.
For math it is, but do the math teachers maybe have up to twenty-twos for their homeroom? Probably.
Okay. Okay.
So, at Clark Lane, there are twenty-four teachers that are teaching grade six through eight, is that what you're telling us?
In the core, in these four core academic areas.
In the four core areas, but we also know that we offer electives like tech ed, culinary.
World language.
World language.
Phys ed, art.
Art, music, P E, so so there are more faculty members at Clark Lane than just twenty-four.
So.
Plus special ed-related service.
I would like to know, talking about Clark Lane, what are those other people teaching, and what are their numbers? And I guess.
Well, you've got that on the following pages, oh, no, that's.
That's the high school.
No, that's the high school, so I mean, we we would talk about that normally during staffing at the finance meeting, but if you want like a list of positions.
High school.
You don't have to give me that now, and I don't want the names, but I'm saying.
Yeah, but it positions per school, we could do that.
I guess if if the end goal here is to get these numbers smaller and you're not spending money, what are the remaining teachers teaching and what's their load?
We should, we should have a sheet like this for the middle, for the middle school.
We could do that same sheet. For middle school, sure.
And 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 then my second question to that is the same thing for the elementary school, if that's the case.
Well, the elementary school's a different setup, you you've got it, you've got it on there, this is, this is accurate for the elementary schools.
Yeah, so. At the elementary level.
Well, but to to Chris's point, there are art, music, P E teachers, there's band orchestra teachers, there's special ed-related service, so.
True, true. But they would get, but they would get these, they would get these classes.
The difference is though, correct.
They travel as a class, so these are the class sizes for every teacher in the building.
Right. Right. When they come to me in the garden, there are twenty-three great neck kids in the fifth grade.
So they travel as a class for specials.
Right, so these numbers here, to your point, let's go with Oswego Chi. Oswego Chi, forget pre-K, because they're not going anywhere, so for K, for kindergarten, fifteen to go into art.
Right.
Seventeen to go into music, twenty-one to go into gym, twenty to go into to the special work.
They travel as a class.
Okay.
Right.
So, and the middle school and the elementary school, are there any coaches that are in these numbers?
No.
No.
No coaches?
No.
No.
Okay.
So, in your, in your packet, you'll you'll have a course offering information, and you'll actually see elementary and what extra specials they get, and middle school, what specials they get as well.
The last.
And we're gonna get to that, we're gonna go through that in depth.
And we're gonna get, yeah, I I'm deaf, I know we're jumping a little bit, but I'm trying to respond to Chris as quickly as possible.
I got it. I got it, I got it. I guess what I was getting at is, what are the rest doing that they can't do to reduce the number if possible, but I'm good, go ahead, I understand.
Everybody has kids at one point, uh, you know, during the day, it's just that they're rotating around.
And they can't teach math, science, social studies.
Because that that one music teacher is is covering a lot of classes.
No, but I I guess what I'm asking is, you're telling us, there's no coach in the middle school or elementary that's going around helping someone, there's no.
There's no more coaches at the middle school, those have all been eliminated.
And no more at the elementary school.
No, that's not true.
If the elementary, we have two language arts and two math, and and they are pushing into classrooms regularly to help co-teach, co-plan, and then also help.
So four coaches at the elementary school.
To be split amongst the three schools, so so two language arts coaches to service fifty-six classrooms and two math coaches to service fifty-six classrooms.
That was six, the board voted to eliminate two.
And now you have four.
Correct, the board eliminated two coaches last year.
So four coaches at the elementary school, none at the middle school.
And no more at the high school as well.
And none at the high school as well.
And they're grade specific, right?
They are.
Yeah.
And I want, I just wanna.
Right, go on, Michelle.
So, okay, so you're saying, going back to this extra classroom thing, so potentially at one point there were eight to ten extra classrooms, I'm just rough numbers.
Back to Clark Lane, yep.
Four num, four potentially were special services.
Yep.
Things got shifted.
Yep.
Is there the potential, and I know it's a cost issue with staffing, to go back to three teams if needed, it would require four teachers?
Correct.
Or, okay, four teachers or split two te- uh teams.
A split team.
Have have an a a a multi-grade level.
I'm not. Right, I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking, making sure it's clear and okay.
Yeah, the the complication about splitting seventh and up is certification.
Yep.
Because sixth grade teachers generally hold a K-six certification, they can kind of, so, you know, I could teach math and science, Marcia could teach language arts and social studies, and you could have a smaller team.
Okay.
When you get up to seventh, eighth grade, you need a seven through twelve cert in a content area, and not many people hold like a science cert and a math cert.
Yeah. Yeah.
They just will be certified generally in one.
The challenge going forward, so we have, this is this year, so this eighth grade of almost two hundred kids exit out, right?
Going to ninth, yep.
One eighty-three goes to eighth grade.
Yep.
One eighty-seven goes to seventh grade.
And then it goes down.
Next year's sixth grade is one eighty-one, right? So it's relatively close, we're gonna exit out one ninety-eight, and we're gonna get in one eighty-one, but they're gonna be down another twenty kids, so this is gonna be about five forty-eight next year.
Yep.
But you're gonna see it then nicely distributed, so all, each class, each grade level's gonna be below one ninety, so it should be comfortable.
Then it drops. Yep. Yep.
The challenge becomes frankly down the road, is when you get beyond this year's fifth grade.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Where you have one sixty, one fifty, one thirty-seven, because if you divide one thirty-seven by eight, I don't have a calculator in front of me,
Yeah.
these numbers become, one thirty-seven divided by eight, classrooms of seventeen.
Seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
So I can tell you.
Yeah.
My old stomping grounds, I was middle school principal in in Monville at Tile Middle School, they experienced this about three years ago. They went from about two hundred kids a grade level to now same thing, one sixties. They have kept the sixth grade in a team model of four and four as the first grade in middle school, and they have essentially converted seventh and eighth to a junior high model, where you're not part of a team.
Back to junior, back to junior high?
Because.
Because of certification.
Yeah.
And the numbers wise, do you really want, each board and community are gonna make their own decisions. Do you really wanna pay for class sizes of sixteen in eighth grade with eight teachers and two teams?
Yeah. So.
And weigh the instructional value against the financial impact. This board is going to have some tough decisions to make.
So.
Well, one. Yeah, and one of the things I was gonna think, I, but that's an even better idea, what you just said, but I was thinking.
I don't know if it's a, it's not an idea, it's extended a fact.
Uh, what, what, yeah, but. Right, but but what, but I was thinking, maybe the fifth grader, like East Line does, the fifth grade is in the middle school, right? Take the fifth grade out of the elementary schools, and um and then you'll have more room for your pre-Ks and all that sort of stuff.
Throw up. But, if this is fifteen fifteen, or this is add another number to there, because you've opened it up, this number's greater, making all of these greater, making the other end of the game greater, because those kids, if they're there, why are they gonna move? Because they're already there.
Right.
So if you s- open that up, and they're going, they're not gonna leave, because you're not gonna wanna separate your kid from those things unless you're moving, and it keeps them there if that's opened up.
So we we get, yeah, so we've got a whole bunch of things, but but I I I would like some information about that junior high, back to the junior high model, that's a, that's a very interesting, um.
Which just means that, like, when you have a split team, they're teaching like some seventh, some eighth, but they they're kind of responsible for for like that as one team.
Right. Right.
Where, like, the concept could be that, and you would run these mini seventh and eighth grade teams, or you'd just run, like, you go to, like, you might have the math teacher for seventh grade and eighth grade, or.
Right, right.
Like, it's a couple different models.
But they would be um subject certified, right?
Subject certified.
They would have to be, yeah.
Have to be, yeah.
Yeah.
But to your point about making a decision, it has to be held for a year or two to go, if that model goes from eighteen or nineteen to fourteen or fifteen, like you're saying, you have to look at the test scores, and I get what you're saying, that it's money over education, but if the test scores are indicative of them going up because it's lower, then you can say to the public, look, we kept it at fourteen, but now we went, just figuratively speaking, we're at a seventy-seven, now we went to an eighty-six in the scores by us keeping it low, so we'll.
And Chris, and that did happen in our elementary schools when we had low, real low numbers.
Right. So. Right, so we can say, we'll go low, we'll go low in the number, for the score, or we'll stay high for the money.
For the, for the benefit of. Yeah.
It's up to you, but the score has to be indicative of the number.
Or or some some indication that there is a a benef, an educational benefit.
Right. 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 All right, I got it, all right, let's move on to the high school.
I, I, well, um, okay.
What you have.
Michelle, any other questions about middle school?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
And I apologize, I didn't realize that the numbers were already here, are these the same numbers as what we just got there?
So, what. Well, no, here, basically, what we gave you in this packet is like.
Original packet.
You will see three classes, here's the number of kids, and there's the average class size, and then you wanted to say, what does the exact everyone?
Okay, I thought it was average, right, the individual ones, yes. That, okay.
We basically made a business decision to consolidate this, to not get people number crazy.
Right, no, but I wanted to see.
With with exact like courses, but there's nothing to hide here.
Yeah.
I wanted to see.
What Craig is talking about, the supplemental packet that Carolyn sent out, will just break out, so thirty-seven kids in three sections.
To the individual classes.
Yeah, it's the same information.
How is that, there is it twelve, twelve, and fourteen?
But. Right, but see, that was what, that's what gave me the idea in the whole first place, was when I got this packet of individual class sizes last year, there were some really low numbers on here, and even if you look at the first page of the one, the handout that Carolyn gave us, we've got some nines and sixes and sevens and, and for tha- that that's, that's a prep school education.
Yeah, and and.
Yeah, and 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 maybe it's paying off, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it it's it's hard to look, and, you know, I don't wanna go too far down the rabbit hole in terms of scheduling. There are challenges with high school scheduling, where you are not gonna get even distributions, because the kid who takes French four,
Yes. Yep.
Plays the violin.
Right.
Wants AP stats, AP physics, and wants to take boot camp as their phys ed elective.
Right. Yep.
You're gonna get those anomalies of of disparities.
I, yes, and I understand that, Tom, but to me, it was just so, so disparaging to see, I I mean, it's wonderful to see, especially if we're getting a payout in the end on their education, um, that they're really benefiting from this, and being good citizens and critical thinkers and everything else, and matriculating it to good places. But when I see the twenty-threes at the elementary school, and the twenty-fours and twenty-fives at the middle school, and then the sixes and sevens at the high school, to me, that was so inequitable that I had to say something, and that's what spurred the whole, the whole discussion, was this individual class sizes that we got last year.
I think the number that I wanna draw your attention to, which is the number we're looking at, when I say we, administration as we enter budget season, is really this bottom number of, this happens to be English.
Total average.
So when you look at all the English classes added up, number of kids, sections, et cetera, we have nine hundred and forty-two kids.
Yep.
Now you're probably saying, well, there's not nine hundred and forty-two kids at the high school.
There are less than.
You you have the duplicates, so there are kids taking two English classes or three English classes.
Ah, okay.
Those are split amongst sixty-five sections for an average class size of fourteen and a half students.
Yeah.
Which obviously you're saying, well, grade five has twenty-three.
Right.
Obviously, and you're gonna see, there's some twenty-threes in here, there's a twenty-five, there's some twenties.
Right, right.
But yes, there are some eights and, you know, take out capstone for a minute, because this is the pilot year, but
Right.
Yeah, your AP classes, which are small, an average of twelve and twelve, do drag down those averages, with that said,
But you're the same problem. it is, the numbers don't lie, you have fourteen and a half students per English sec- section. But you run into some of the same problems if you go back up to AP, if you made that only two sections, now you have bigger classes than you probably want for an AP class.
And not every kid might be able to get that class.
Right, and then they switch, so that, you know, maybe there were twelve, fifteen or twenty kids that signed up for playwriting, but because of conflicts or whatever, they they don't end up taking it, you don't know that ahead of time.
Yeah, and.
Gotcha.
As we enter budget season, we'll talk about this more in January, when we get to staffing, and ult, the board, board's the ultimate authority, my philosophy is, we need to keep these AP classes.
Right.
Because if we stop offering those, the families with the means, who want their kids in those classes, move to a town that offers those.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So when we're looking at this, you're probably looking at your English tens, your English nines, bumping those class sizes up, um, you know, if you're looking at at consolidating, and again, you'll get a proposal from administration, and then the board will ultimately make decisions in in February around staffing. Down bottom, and this is the same for every subject, we have teachers who teach an extra class, a sixth assignment, those are highlighted in yellow. We back those out of the average, because those are, the teacher at any time could say, I'm out, I'm not doing it.
It's an in lieu of a duty, so it's an extra class, and the in lieu of a duty is below twelve kids, and so
Uh, right, you're right, that's what, yeah.
like, that's kind of extra, which is why we pulled it off the average, and then when it gets to the.
That's the yellow and the blue.
The yellow is the extra, and the blue, special ed classes.
The yellow.
Okay.
S C stands for support center, so that's a, that's a specialized class, um, where a student is is uh getting additional instruction uh in that particular area for their IP.
So the right, sort of, to recap, the yellow is, that teacher's taking on, a traditional teacher teaches five classes, how many periods are there in a day, six?
Well, there's, there's a. Four at the high school.
Well, but it's an A D block, so so to your point, it's eight.
It's eight over two days. Over two days.
Over two days, teachers get a planning period every day, so that that would mean it's really six, the maximum they could teach.
Four a day.
Normal load is five, because we do need teachers.
What's the bell schedule? The bell schedule represents four blocks?
Four blocks.
Plus a nineteen-minute advisory, so.
So you teach three and have one for prep.
Yeah.
So, in theory, a teacher's teaching three one day, three another day, correct?
Three, and usually two in a duty, or the six period.
So, if you wanted to pick up this class, that yellow is the extra class over two days.
Yes.
Correct.
And.
Chris, instead of having a duty, right, instead of having cafeteria duty or hall duty or something like that.
Yeah.
Right, right, I get it. Right, and in lieu of a duty, do they get compensated in form for, okay.
No. Which is why we pulled it off the average, because it is kind of an extra.
Got it. I got it, I understand.
So fourteen and a half in English, I'm happy to answer your question.
Because Michelle, some, so so just to unpack that, because in some teachers' contracts, they say, we're only teaching five,
I don't know. Math, yep.
and if you want us to teach another, you gotta pay us an extra dole for that class.
Correct.
But you just said they were teaching three.
So.
No, no, can I, can I do it?
Cover two days, can I do?
Please.
This is their schedule. They have, uh, they have four blocks, four on one day, four on another day, so on Monday, there's four classes, Tuesday, there's four classes.
Yeah.
The teacher teaches three and and a day, and then they get a prep, so Monday, I teach three classes and I get a prep. Tuesday, I teach another three and get a, uh, another two and get a prep.
And a duty.
And and a duty, so I could go to study hall, I could go to hall duty, they could pull me in and say, I gotta go cover phys ed, gym, English,
Correct.
'cause someone's out, they can put me anywhere they want, I gotta go cover someone for a P B T.
Or a link.
Or or a.
Or a link, which would be in lieu of a duty, a small class. Or a link, which would be in lieu of a duty, a small class.
In lieu of a duty.
Right, so what they're saying is that yellow represents.
Yep. A duty.
That, a class that they picked up, cause the teacher said, I don't wanna go to a PPT, I don't wanna go to the gym.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do study hall, I'd rather teach something that I like.
Right. Right.
So my question was, do they get paid, cause in some districts, don't quote me, don't quote me, like in London, if you pick up the extra class, they give you money, don't quote me. So I was asking, do they get the extra, the, the extra debt, and they're saying that they don't.
And just one other clarification for per, so we, when we say.
No, no, because they build it into their contract, cause.
When we say an AB block, when we say an AB block.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's what happens.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's like A day, B day, then it goes back to A day.
E day. Yeah.
So we're saying that the high school schedule runs over two days to complete like their courses.
Two days. Okay.
So if they're, if they meet on A day, they don't meet again until after B day, till it's an A day again.
Okay.
Where in middle school and elementary, they have the same teacher every day.
Right.
So it's a different model of a schedule.
When we go to math, uh, again, I have to answer any questions on individual sections, but we have seven hundred and forty-three kids in forty-seven sections of math for a class size average of fifteen point eight one. There are two sixth assignments here, and there's no particular uh blue, blue special ed classes in, in this particular uh area. We go to. I'm, I'm sorry, back to English for a half a second.
Yeah.
The SC humanities, I don't know that you explained it, and if you did, I didn't catch it.
Oh. That is weird, so SC means support center.
Uh, that stands for support.
Special ed.
Special ed co-op cla- it's a special ed class, and we wanna keep specialty classes low.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's why we pulled that off the average too, because some kids with, with IEP needs might need, yeah.
We got it here, Tom, if you.
So how often are the um classes evaluated for um interest, I guess, like?
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, there are, this gets back to the board's graduation policy, so ki- kids have to take something.
Yeah.
So like, everyone has to take health, so we don't evaluate popularity of that, cause everyone.
Yep, yep. But you don't need extra ones.
But then, we, we offer it and, and we are seeing if we're able to run it. The question I think that Marcia's posing is if English has fourteen point whatever as an average, if we reduce the English department from ten to nine, the average might go up to sixteen or seventeen. Is that tolerable? And there you've saved a teacher, a teaching position to re- be reused, not maybe the person,
Yep.
the position somewhere else.
But I'm, I guess, I understand that, is that answering my question, I guess, about like a specialty class?
Okay.
Yeah, so take diverse voices.
Like what's for example? Yeah.
So the kids choose, they select their courses at the beginning of course selection period.
Yeah.
Is there a minimum of so many kids?
January, February.
Right, in beginning, yeah, the beginning usually a second semester, and then based on that, they would decide how many sections of classes would be offered. So the kids, really, you're evaluating every year what the student interest is.
So you have to have a minimum of, well, I see here maybe.
Six.
Four?
Playwright?
I see, well, that might be, cause it's special, but.
Yeah, it, it, it just, it depends, I mean, if two kids sign up for a class, it's not gonna run.
Playwright, the, the playwright is intense.
So our program of studies has more courses than what you're gonna see in these sections, because if it doesn't have a critical mass.
Yeah. Yeah.
And what was our curri- aren't they used to be like twelve?
We're not gonna run.
So we've only said for a sixth period, it was twelve and under. So that would generally mean to teach a course, it would be more than twelve and up, and you will see there are some courses that are not a sixth period that are under that barometer.
Okay.
And that is to fill teacher schedules, it is also, but it's also part of the scheduling process, because as kids select, pick a low number, there might have been fifteen in that class, but because they had a conflict and they chose, I need banned. Banned's here, it's in conflict with this, I'm gonna choose a different class. You think about it during like an ad drop, ad drop is more college, but I'm just trying to give you a mindset of high school.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna have, yeah, yeah.
So then that's why you might get lower numbers.
And so for example, like this jazz improv, which has two students, it's a sixth assignment. It's because the teacher chose to, chose to teach that for those two students that had extreme interest.
Yes.
And, and instead of doing cafeteria duty or something, I would definitely watch two kids instead of cafeteria duty.
And it's an in lieu of.
Instead of doing.
No, I mean, but also, let, I mean, let's face it, it's jazz, we know who the teacher, so, like, Tim loves to teach, Tim loves music,
Right, right.
Yeah, I know.
Right, right, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Tim would rather make sure that, that all the kids move and further their musical career.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so in English, we've got an average of fourteen point four nine, in math, we've got an average of fifteen point eight one.
As we move on to science.
In science, we've got an average of fifteen point four nine, in social studies, sixteen point eight one.
Yep. Yep.
World language, fifteen point five seven.
Yep.
Art, sixteen point five, music, twenty-two point seven.
But they're.
But they're.
Ensembles.
Right, 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 understandably, and P health, twenty, and tech ed, s- sixteen.
Yep. Sixteen, yep.
And, um, and.
Now that's, let me just explain that sheet a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of health and safety regulations in certain classes with power tools and shop.
Ah, okay.
We cap, this so column, this column capped or not capped, we are supposed to cap the cap classes at sixteen.
Yep.
NC means no cap, if you enroll up to, pick a number.
Oh, okay.
When it's health and safety, there's OSHA standards, there's standards for that, and, 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 I mean, Grosso must have the same thing with the shop classes, like, you, 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 you just have lesser numbers for safety purposes.
So when you see.
Sure.
Power tool, power tool, power tool, automotive, down here, more, uh, transportation, that's in the shop,
Transportation, right.
and then more power tools, those classes will cap at sixteen, but you can see a seventeen here because, you know,
Right.
we didn't want to, you know, box out a, a, a kid.
Right. So tech ed's bro- approximately sixteen and hospitality's approximately eighteen point one. So that was, that was basically what spurred my interest in saying, you know, we've got our poor little fifth graders and all our elementary kids and all our middle school kids at, at much higher numbers than this and averages, and, and what can we do to make it more equitable? And, and where do we want our smallest classes to be? Where is the most benefit for our smallest class sizes? Where is it most productive?
Well, to piggyback that, I don't think that I see here the number of teachers for these particular sections. So like, looking back to tech ed, how many teachers are there for these, all of these courses? Yep, that always, we, we'll, we can have that next time, we do publish that publicly, that's in our budget books every year, uh, but we can, we can add that for next time.
But for our next meeting, we're gonna say, what else do you need, and this will be one of the things we'll give you, cause that's the need.
Right, yeah. So then you can, to your point, then you can take a deeper dive to go, just pick English. If English, that average is sixty-five classes and uh it's fourteen point four nine, how many teachers are there for English?
Right.
And that'll get you to your question, or that'll get you to the answer. It'll get you closer to where you wanna be to understand it, which is.
And firstly, I would love to see all our classes, as I said before, small. Yeah, I, I think that's, if we could do that, I, I think it has a wonderful impact on, on the students. But I don't, I can't scientifically say that there is data to show that in every age group. I would love to see what, if there is some magic number where it splits and it no longer becomes effective. And Tom, I will refer to you to find that for us, if, if, if there is such data, or.
Yeah, oh, there's certainly studies out there on class size.
Yeah.
I will tell you, uh, from my twenty, I think this is my twenty-fifth year in education, I can find you twenty studies that says eighteen is the magic number, and I'm gonna find twenty studies that says twenty-two kids is the magic number.
Oh, right. Okay, okay.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, I know.
The challenge.
Yep, you can always find something to, to, uh, some, some sort of research to back up your point.
And, and I'm not, I'm just sharing information to put it into perspective. The difference between a high school and a middle school, I certainly know Deb would know this.
Yep.
Is that there's no choice pre-K through eight, right?
Right.
You take what we give you, there's seventh grade science, that's what you take.
Right.
There's sixth grade math, there's not four sixth grade maths you can choose from, there's one. Same thing can be said for art, you take sixth grade art, there's not digital photography and pottery and ceramics. There's no choice at pre-K to eight. Little bit at the middle school in terms of world language and nuances, but generally speaking, the big differentiator with high schools and offerings and whatnot is that there's choice, right? I mean, you can see.
Yeah.
There's, if you're a junior, pretty much any course on this list is open to you. I won't say freshman as much because there's kinda some required courses, this English nine you're taking. But as you get to junior and senior year, you might have fifteen English courses to choose from. And that's the value judgment the board has made and will continue to make to say, fifteen is too many for a junior to, to choose from for English class. We are gonna give kids six choices of junior English classes, and those are.
And, and we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot.
You don't.
By reducing it too much, or, or even reducing it at all maybe.
We don't wanna box kids out.
Right, right.
You know, you don't wanna have a million science options, but not have a lot of other options in, you know, other areas,
We wanna. Right. Exactly, exactly.
You're not meeting the needs of every kid.
Right.
Exactly.
There's, there's two pieces for me this second. One piece is aside from how many teachers are teaching these subject areas, the other piece would be, now that you're saying it, is what are the grades, what are the grade levels for these things? So how many kids just take here integrated science age at uh forty-nine, three, sixteen, four, three? How many of those forty-nine kids are ninth graders, how many of those kids are tenth graders? How many of those kids are juniors and how many of those kids are seniors? That's also gonna get you to the question, and I'm not agreeing, and I wouldn't agree to reducing any AP classes. I agree with you, because you need those AP classes, cause if you don't have them, like you said, and I agree with you,
Yeah.
they're just gonna go someplace else.
Right.
The AP classes, that's the steak, that's not pasta, that's, you need that.
Right, right.
You gotta have, that steak, that shrimp, you need that, because that.
No, and, and I'm not sure being.
So generally speaking, to your question, integrated science is more of a ninth grade off- offering. However, we don't require four years of science, so could a sophomore take integrated science? Yes, if they didn't take a science class as a freshman because they wanted to concentrate on other things. So it becomes a little more muddy at the high school level to say per grade level. I mean, there are some things that's easy, ninth grade English is ninth grade only. Health is tenth grade only, like, there are some kind of things that are standard.
Specific.
Right, but I think to Marcia's question, to get, to take a deeper dive into what you're looking at, where the courses are, I think that you need to see what grades it is being offered for, and then when you look at the number of classes versus the number of students, what grades are taking it. That's gonna be able to tell you if you want to reduce or increase because it tells you how many kids are taking it.
Mm-hmm. I would almost re- defer to the administration for something like that, um, uh, whereas we could look at the whole picture, but, um, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, the challenge is, and I'm not saying that you're gonna get a budget from me that reduces any staff at the high school or adds any staff, but generally speaking, you can't think about really just saying, oh, we're gonna have a bunch of point sixes all over the school teaching, because those people come and go and you'll never fill them.
Right, right, yeah.
So it's really a one point oh or a zero, because you can't.
Exactly. That's right, no, I would never think of a.
No, but I'm not saying you would, but people, sometimes, not the, this board or anything, just will say cherry pick and say,
Yeah.
well, we can, we can go to a point six here and a point four in math.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm just saying.
That, that does not work, that does not work.
No, no, it doesn't work. I, I was not, I don't, I don't think I was thinking.
No, 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 I, no, I didn't hear that.
Right, okay.
Okay.
I'm just saying, for you to get the answer, or for us to get the answer, those are questions that need to be answered to get, to get you better. The only thing, looking at this from a broad perspective, to me, is if you go back to this first page on, go up, up, all the way up, down, I'll tell you when, keep going, one more. Right there, if you're looking to reduce these numbers because we think that they're high, if they're high, you either have to spend more money, in my opinion, to add another teacher, do something with this pre-K thing, or, I'm not speaking for you, but you have these four coaches. If you take two of the coaches out and you're putting them into a classroom, it's re- it's reducing the number, it, that's the end game to what you want, what else is there, why you add more teachers in? And then you may have the challenge of explaining to your constituents, while you have thirteens and twelves and fourteens at elementary. Because with three neighborhood elementaries, I mean, you have.
Yeah, elementary is a.
You may not like twenty-two and twenty, right? And saying even twenty-one, twenty-one if it was evenly distributed.
Right.
But forty-two divided by three is fourteen.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's.
Then it gets too small.
Easy or hard to defend.
Right, right, right.
Same here, I mean, you're at fifty, uh, sixty, uh, fifty-four again.
It's a good opportunity. Pre-K. Three.
Fifty-four divided by four, I mean, you're, you're looking at obscenely low class sizes.
Yeah.
And people are gonna say, well, you eliminated that, and now your fifth grade class size is less than your kindergarten.
I, I, I.
There's no easy answer to this.
I agree.
And my kid can't take French.
Right, right, right.
And, and, and I wouldn't go with the coaches all the time, Chris, either, right?
Oh, right, I.
Because, because I gotta tell you, those coaches are in there, and they're specific to the grade levels, and I think the coaches are doing a great job of, um, improving the teaching quality that they have.
And I, and I'm not saying, I, I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying, that's an option,
Yeah.
unless we were to take and put more money in to add more teachers, or, remember the other thing I said, is expand that pre-K, so you get to, you get the return on the investment because they're staying, or you're charging them. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm just proposing, I'm throwing paint on the wall going, one, the coaches, in no order.
We're, we're brainstorming.
Right, we're brainstorming, two, expand the pre-K, three, charge for the pre-K, put more paras in. And I'm not, I'm just saying, those are the options as I see it, just sitting here now that I've digested it.
So I think we need to finish this meeting.
Getting hungry.
And so I think we need to.
Yeah, well, the purpose of today's meeting was really go over this packet and ask the committee, what else do you need? So we've written down, I've written down at least three things that you wanted to bring back, which is research for class sizes,
Yep, yeah.
the effect of teachers versus paras, the number of teachers per department, did I miss anything?
Can we look at some different middle school models?
I have.
Middle school, junior, high school models.
She's very excited about junior high school.
Well, okay.
Be very excited about junior high school.
I also wrote down, giving you his, some historical look back on elementary class sizes.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
I also wrote down class sizes in electives at the middle school.
Yep.
I think Chris asked for that, the number of teachers per section at the high school, um, as well as if, if it's possible to break down at the high school, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior enrollment in courses, and then middle school models, which was just said.
How many?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, no.
No, no, finish your sentence.
I was gonna suggest, seeing as we've all been here now over three hours, and I will stay as long as you want, that the course offerings, we stay, see them at the next meeting, but that's all I was gonna say.
Another yes, please.
I agree.
I agree.
But you had a question to share.
Uh, no, I was gonna say, how, for colleges, um, how many years of, um, language is?
So generally, three, um, will get you into competitive colleges, uh, you, you, you remember that there wasn't a world language requirement until the board changed it because of the state statutes. Now there is a requirement that everyone has to take one year.
One year.
As a high school graduation requirement to get out of high school.
Uh-huh.
But three years for most colleges.
Three years in high school?
You call it requires three.
Three years in high school.
Three years in high school.
In high school, not in grade.
Right.
Because it really counts for credit and. Right, because it really counts for credit, and credits are only given in high school.
So, okay, so why?
Usually, when you take, back then, when you, if you had a third year of a language, you don't have to take a language, you know.
Oh, I got it.
No.
Sometimes, yeah.
I answered my question, okay, I answered my question. Are you adding sign language, was that a rumor?
Well, it, it, we are, it's, so we're exploring opportunities.
Alright.
And so, we have a fortunate person, we have someone who is Latin and sign language certified.
I'm all extent. Okay.
So, why would we not wanna explore the use of that? And so, I do have a curriculum, in this case, creation, normally revision, process in place, to propose that as an opportunity in the future.
Okay.
Could we also see, I, uh, one of the things we, is there some data as to our own students' scores going up and the class sizes, or, is there, is that a true-
A correlation between score or class size?
Yeah, or, or matric- matriculation rate, uh, um, where, I think we got a, a, a thing about where our kids are matriculating to, and it's not just always colleges, I don't wanna, everybody to think that that's the end all and be all, um.
Yeah.
And sometimes, they're making business decisions.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
I mean, with the state offering two years free community college.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like, if I was a high school kid with a single mother, as I was, I might choose that free option for two years,
It's a game thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And then save my dollars and matriculate into a, a different type of school, junior, senior year.
I hit, I hear your point, so that, that wouldn't be a valid thing anyway, though. Is there any other thing that you guys can think of that would show us the educational-
I mean, this, I think that's for a lot to digest if the next meeting, and then if we think about more, we can-
Yeah. Think, think of a way to evaluate the educational impact of cu- small class sizes at the high school. If we have a means of doing that, that would be, if we don't, uh, then that's what it is.
I'm certainly not an expert in, in-
I think you can find qualitative data more than you can quantitative data.
I was gonna say, there's so many other causal factors.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, one of the biggest factors of, you know, when you look at high school graduation and college successes, are you on a grade level reading by grade three?
Ah, by grade three?
By grade three, I mean, that's what they're saying, the latest research is the single biggest determinant of success
Wow.
in school, is can you read on grade level by grade three?
Wow.
So I mean, there's so many, and that, now, go back to how that happens.
What? Yeah.
Percentage of two parent families in your community, percent of parents with a college degree, are they reading to their kid
Ah, sure, sure. Right.
birth through three, when they're in, I mean, there's so many causal factors to say, you can't ever, I say, in my heart of hearts, say, class sizes of fifteen equals Princeton.
Yeah.
It's just not-
No, you're absolutely right.
No, no.
No, and I don't, I know that's not what you're saying, I know that's not what you're saying.
Uh, alright, well, we have been here a long time with that.
But it's been good discussion.
It has been a very good discussion, I think this is wonderful.
Both of you. We do need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We do, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.